So I couldn't put your book down. It, it, I went way past my bedtime because I couldn't put it down. So you were saying?
Yeah, I feel like I've been apologizing for the book since I put it out because it's, you know, it's pretty graphic and there's a lot of violence in it. Uh, and um, you know, I feel like it, it, there's a certain genre of reader that it's designed for. It's not for everyone. And uh, so I'm, I'm always very flattered when I find somebody who, it works for them.
Right. Did, you know, the violence wasn't graphic. I mean, it, we didn't get detailed descriptions of gore and wounds and stuff. So there, there is at no point where I felt, you know, eviscerated by the description of the violence or something, but there was a lot of it. Well, let me just introduce you. So we're talking to William Scott Huber. And I want to read from about the author, his book. Um, uh, after the virus, a survivalist journal. Scott Huber has packed numerous lifetimes worth of experience into one. Having worked as a ranger, wildlife tour guide, environmental educator, hunting guide, real estate agent, solar energy consultant, and advertising account executive. You like to bird hunt, fish, hike and sail. You've been in our school board and city council in Chico. Served as president of the local Audubon chapter and have two daughters and a son. And our grandfather and a husband. So that's a lot to pack into one life. Let, let's start with where and when you were born at the very beginning.
Sure, uh, I was born in nineteen fifty-six in Culver City, California, which is in West Los Angeles. And Culver City's motto is where Hollywood movies are made. So I had a movie studio at the end of my block and I had another, uh, couple of studios within a mile. It was a fun town to grow up in. For fun, in, in childhood, we used to sneak into the movie studios and climb around on the sets.
Right. What month were you born? I'm interested in your astrological sign.
Sure, October twenty-second.
So you're a Scorpio.
Uh, I'm a Libra on the cusp of Scorpio.
Ah, and do you feel like that? Like a person who really appreciates harmony and balance? And also has intense, sometimes subterranean feelings?
I very much identify with the balance idea. Uh, I, I seek balance in everything I do, whether it's in my personal life or whether it is, uh, in my dealings with the city issues.
Okay, um, let's, let's go to the book. Uh, your first book was not this novel. It was a naturalist journal. What was that book about?
Sure, um, if you're familiar with the Sierra Club's planner. You know, every Christmas time, if you're out shopping for calendars for people, uh, Sierra Club puts out this beautiful day planner or week planner, um, where there'll be photos on one side and then seven days of the week on the other. And you can sort of map out your life with that little journal. And my mom kept one of those for about twenty years, the last twenty years of her life. Uh, wrote in it every day. Uh, you can't write much, there's not a lot of room. Uh, and so I used that model as the basis for my first publication, which was Norcal Naturalist Journal and Calendar. And it had, um, I think forty-eight photographs taken by either myself or my son Liam. And then fifty-two, I think fifty-two, uh, short as one-page essays on something that matched the week of the year in nature. In other words, you know, everything that happens in nature is very seasonal with when the flowers bloom to when the migrating birds arrive, when the migrating birds depart, uh, when animals court and mate and all those sort of things. So the, the stories, uh, matched the week of the year that the journal was dealing with.
So growing up in Culver City, you didn't have a lot of nature. I grew up also in West LA and I was lucky because I grew up in the canyons and we were hiking around in the dirt and the oak trees all the time. So how did you get from being a city boy to being an expert on botany? And, and you majored in geography?
Yeah, um, I, I craved nature from the time I was a young child. Uh, always felt like a fish out of water in the city. Um, and always longed to move to the country. Um, you know, in high school, I was researching homesteading in Alaska and, uh, homesteading in Australia. And those were things that I was, um, just very excited about. Uh, it took me twenty-three years to get out of the city, but there was no looking back once I did. And, uh, you know, Chico, coming from suburbia, uh, Chico at that time seemed like a, a reasonable facsimile for a rural lifestyle. And of course, it kind of was back in nineteen seventy-nine, uh, much less so now. And so, uh, you know, now I'm, well, and so, uh, but the one thing that Chico had was a, an easy access to nature right outside the boundaries of the community. So as soon as you got out of town, you were in the wheat fields or the rice fields or the orchards or the foothills or up Deer Creek or up Mill Creek, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, I've always said about Chico, my favorite thing about living here is the access that you have to everything just outside of town.
Upper Park is amazing. It's so beautiful and so many trails and, um, it's stupendous. I, I, I really appreciate that too. So why did you major in geography rather than botany or biology?
Yeah, you know, in retrospect, um, I wish that I had, um, buckled down and been a geog- or a biology major, uh, because I think that's really where my heart was. But geography just seemed like an easier path to graduation and I took the easier path rather than the harder path. So I've always been sort of a, a closet biologist, uh, in, in, uh, in a geographer's outfit. Yeah, but geography, you know, there's a lot to love about geography. And geography's, an understanding of geography sets you up for an understanding of all those other disciplines.
Right.
Because geography is kind of the overarching, um, understanding of why things are where they are. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's topography, it's, it's what's, it, it can really take in all of those other disciplines.
Does anyone know the source, the location of the volcano, the ancient one that created the lava flow in Upper Bidwell Park?
Yeah, you know, um, I worked at the Big Chico Creek Ecological Reserve for a number of years as the, uh, education coordinator. And there is a, a basalt dome on the reserve or just above the reserve, actually.
Four thousand acres almost of the reserve.
Yeah, forty-five hundred acres. Uh, just above Big Chico Creek Ecological Reserve, there's a dome that was part of that complex of that, of those lava flows that created, you know, the Tuscan Formation that we see in Upper Park and, um, that sort of thing. So I think, uh, that's part of the answer to your question.
Where, where is that? If in terms, if I wanted to go see that mound, where, how would I find it?
So it's not, it, what you would do is, I think these days you have to have permission uh, to walk around unaccompanied on the Big Chico Creek Reserve. They've had some issues over the years that, uh, where they've become a little more strict on, on, um, free access all over the reserve. And you have to be there on a non-hunt day and that sort of thing. But if you are able to get on there, uh, you would go to the extreme north end of the reserve, uh, along the creek. And you would look up at Musty Buck Ridge on the, uh, west side across from you. And you would see this, um, it's sort of subtle, but you would see this big basalt dome. And, uh, it's actually very close. Ken and, and Ken Grossman and Katie Gonzer have a property and it may be on their property or right next to their property up there. They've got about two-hundred-and-eighty acres up there.
Hmm, wow. Um, to get back to your novel, what, what inspired you? It's different than anything that I know that you've done. What, what was the impetus to the catalyst?
Yeah, I think, um, part of it is, is just being surrounded by such obvious history. So, uh, over the years of wandering around the foothills, I've encountered many, um, bedrock grinding mortar stones, bedrock grinding stones.
For acorns.
And there are some caves, uh, in Upper Park or just above Upper Park that are full of grinding holes. And, and I, I really think that that was the impetus to the story for me was sort of, um, envisioning what life must have been like for the people who survived every day of their life in the outdoors.
This is the Machu Picchu and the May do?
Yes, I, you know, I don't know where the Machu Picchu sort of delineate the edge of where their homeland was, but it certainly seems like it's May do. Um, it, well, and, and I think Machu Picchu is a sect or a, or clan of a May do tribe. Don't want to get it wrong because I know that that's, um, that's me commenting on somebody else's culture. But, um, so those, those caves and those, uh, bedrocks and seeing that such obvious, uh, history of people living out in our, in our, you know, near the Chico environment inspired me to, to write a story about a, uh, twenty-first century, middle-aged white man who, uh, had survived, uh, the Gulf War or the War Against Terror. Um, coming home and then being faced with this cataclysmic, um, uh, collapse of the world as we knew it, based on climate change finally catching up to us.
And this is twenty thirty-four, the book is set in, and there's an Ebola-like pandemic that kills most people except those who are somehow immune to it, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, so I mean, um, at its core, this is ecofiction. This is an environmental disaster that, uh, leads to an apocalypse. And that apocalypse comes in the form of a mutated virus, uh, which is, you know, not too unlike what we're seeing a glimpse, getting a glimpse of right now. Although fortunately, um, you know, not nearly as extreme as, as the picture I paint in the book. But, you know, it was just, uh, five or ten years ago that Ebola's Ebola, um, made it into this country. And boy, I think we really dodged a bullet there. Because if it had gone the way that our current pandemic is going, can you imagine what would have happened to us?
Cause there's no, there's no vaccine for Ebola, right?
Well, um, I'm, I'm not certain about that. There may be vaccines for certain types of Ebola. But once a, once a virus like that mutates, if the, if the vaccine you have doesn't work on the mutation, then you're SOL. So, um, that's, that's what this book was imagining, was that sort of scenario.
What, um, is the connection with climate change and the fictional pandemic in your book?
So what climate change allows to happen is, uh, the warming of the oceans, the raising of, uh, the, of sea level, the fowling of fresh water. The increased temperature allows the expansion of, um, species, especially in this case mosquitoes, that carry viruses to expand their range. And so they move out of their traditional range in the, in the tropics or in the equatorial region. And they move into the temperate zone up where we are. Um, and, you know, that, that just wreaks havoc on everything we have established.
Yeah, and people point out with COVID that as we encroach on wild areas, there's more contact with bats and other kind of animals that are carriers. So it's like our lack of respect for wilderness areas, encroachment leads to these kind of problems.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, there's a lot of dystopian novels and films, maybe the last decade or more. And your book, I think, fits in with that. Why, do you have any ideas about why so many dystopias rather than utopian fiction?
Um, well, I think people are afraid. I, I think that, you know, I was, uh, in the sixties, I probably wasn't very aware, at least in the early sixties, I wasn't very aware of, um, environmental degradation and habitat loss and, um, endangered species. But certainly by the late sixties and early seventies, for me, uh, it became, it became something that I've been hearing about on a daily basis for the rest of my life. And children that are grown, you know, growing up now, people younger than me, have been hearing the warnings and hearing about the degradation from the day they're born. I like to say that, uh, you know, I'm glad I was born when I was because I saw a shade of blue sky that people don't see now. The sky's not as blue as it was when you and I were, were children. Um, so, you know, I think that there is a cynicism, there's a pessimism about our future. And I would say that I'm neither of those things. I'm not, I'm not cynical and I'm not pessimistic. I feel like I'm realistic, I'm pragmatic. I think if you look at all the evidence of, of everything that's ever happened with humans and everything that's ever happened with the earth, you come to the conclusion that, um, eventually we're going to reach our carrying capacity on this planet.
Turning points, they call them too.
Yes, yeah. And, um, you know, and once we do, we're going to go through a series of die-offs. And are humans going to choose to fix it? I don't know. It seems to me that when faced with those questions in the past, we've always chosen greed over, uh, over solutions.
Yeah, I think that they just turned down banning fracking in California and the state legis- they couldn't even get out of committee.
Right, exactly.
I just finished a book where I interviewed girl climate activists, girls and young women around the world. And they are really angry at what older generations have wrought. So that, they're angry and they say, but we have to be hopeful or we wouldn't do all this work of organizing. So, um, they're fueled by their anger, but it doesn't keep them from taking action. But what's interesting to me about this generation Z is they don't respect older people very much. I mean, they like their elders, but they, they think we've really goofed up.
Yeah, who can blame them?
Yeah, really. Trump didn't help that either.
Boy, that's the truth.
Do you, do you have hopes that, um, Biden's more progressive commitment to dealing with climate change will have any impact? Is he doing enough?
No, I don't think he's doing enough, but I think he's doing as much as he can make happen. Um, yeah, I, uh, you know, on the whole issue of sort of this progression toward, uh, mass extinction, mass extinction, um, I, I think there are things that we can do to slow the process. And I think that, you know, when you talk about these young activists, young biologists, um, and their optimism and their hopefulness, you have to have that because we want to, we want to make it last as long as we can. I don't think we can make it last forever. But if we can, if we can extend it, if we can give ourselves and the species around us more time, you know, if, uh, if we can assure that our grandchildren get to see wild elephants and wild Sumatran rhinoceroses and, and pangolins, um, and if that lasts for a few more generations, well, it's better than it only lasting one more generation.
Some people say that engineering, capturing, uh, carbon dioxide from the atmosphere has to happen. We have to have some kind of major engineering ways to capture it. Although we could do it the old-fashioned way and do organic farming and replant forests, rainforests that have been torn down to run cattle. So we have the techniques, we just don't have the will. Do you, do you think that means that we have to rely on some kind of fancy engineering carbon capture?
Yeah, I think we have to do something major if we want to try to reverse the trends of, you know, what we naturally do, which is just keep growing our population and, and using up resources. We have to do something. I'm, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
You know, people, people, I, I just go back to the book for a minute because I'm, I'm reminded of, I'm reminded by what I'm saying, how sort of grim, uh, the book is. And it, and everybody who has read it, the one, the one unifying comment has been that it's grim. And my response is, well, yeah, most post-apocalyptic stories are grim. Um, because they deal with, uh, you know, a cataclysmic crisis that you're trying to crawl out of. That's what post-apocalypse is. So it is a grim story, um, but it's not without hope.
Well, the hope is that they, the survivalists find a tanker that they're hoping to board to take them out to sea to avoid radiation from some nuclear program that I don't understand. Is, is that the hope in the book?
Um, the hope is that goodness in the form of our heroes in the book, because they're good people. The hope is that heroes will survive this sort of onslaught of protagonists. In the protagonists in the form of not only people and militia, but protagonists in the form of what's happened to the environment and the planet. The hope is that they will endure and, um, you know, with a population brought down by ninety-five to ninety-eight percent, uh, that's a starting point that the earth could handle. That's a number of humans that, you know, if, if they were to start over with those kind of numbers and do it right, it could potentially make this all work.
I didn't understand the plot from some remnant of the UN to nuclear bomb. I, what was all that about?
Yeah, so, um, a development in the last third of the story is that, uh, after being pursued by this sort of shadow militia, shadow paramilitary, that we don't really know what their, their goal is other than they want to eliminate anybody who may be able to infect them. So they see, uh, these, uh, asymptomatic carriers who haven't died from the virus as a threat. So they're trying to kill them off. Well, they get a coded message, they decode a message that's broadcast.
On the radio.
It, it appears to be from the, from the UN, from a remnant of the UN, um, letting them know about a plan, broadcasting a plan in code, uh, that the country is going to be nuked to sort of provide a blank slate. And so that anybody who picks up the message should get out of, off of the continent uh, to avoid dying either directly from the, uh, the blasts or from the radiation. So that is what everybody who receives this message and is able to interpret it is trying to do. They're trying to get out to sea as far as they can to avoid this, uh, this cleansing.
The, the other hopeful thing is someone does find Will's journal. So it implies there's survivors.
And I think, um, you know, part of writing a journal is, even if it's a private diary, uh, I, I think in the back of your mind, you hope someday somebody's going to read it.
Or not.
In the, in the case of a diary, I mean, maybe it's, you hope they don't read it until after you're gone. But, I mean, most people journal because, uh, uh, well, I think, I do. I, I think of it as a legacy, that things that I've written, that I hope people understand about my life and my time here after I'm gone.
Hmm, um, I wonder, your character's named Will, your official first name is William. I wonder how you felt when he has to kill his wife, his daughter and his son because they get infected? I mean, did that, how did it feel to, to write that? Cause you must identify with Will.
Yeah, I do. I mean, you know, Will is sort of my alter ego. He's a lot of things that I, um, that I am not. But I think in, in parts, he thinks a lot like me. So, uh, it probably the most controversial part of the book for most people is the first chapter, where, um, I call them mercy killings. He know that his family, he knows that his family is dying of this disease and they're going to die painfully. And so he helps speed that along. My, a lot of people, I think, just put down the book after they read that part. Uh, but what did I feel when I was writing that? Uh, I felt that if I was incredibly brave and, um, incredibly intent on surviving, that it would require making those sort of decisions. Uh, because I think it was a, I think it was both a brave and a charitable move by Will.
I do too. I, I felt like I, I understood that he had to do it.
Yeah, so that's where that comes from.
Yeah, um, you could look at the book.
I wouldn't be brave enough to do that myself.
You never know. I mean, if you saw blood coming out of their eyes and knowing they were suffering, maybe you would.
Yeah.
I hope I would be able to. Uh, we don't have to think about that. Um, you could, you could say that this is a feminist novel because Will partners up with a teenage girl named Hope. She ends up saving him when they band together with other survivalists. Women are strong leaders in that survivalist group as they go down the SAC River. Did you think of it consciously as a kind of a feminist statement?
Um, I didn't really, no. Uh, the few things that I did think of, well, I called on my own, uh, belief, which is, um, my wife finds it funny that I choose, uh, every professional that I choose in my life is female. So doctor, dentist, dermatologist, counselor, whatever, I choose women. And I think, hmm, that says a number of things. Uh, but one is that I, I just have a lot of respect for women and their way of doing things and handling things. Uh, I think it would be great if we had a woman president, which I think we're right on the cusp of having.
Name Mr. Har- Miss Harris.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, so I think that, that worked its way, that insinuated its way into the novel. There's also been, in the last decade or two, there has been, there have been a series of young female heroines from Hunger Games to Divergent to, you know, I can think of two or three others. And I think this just sort of fit with that pattern. So, yeah, it just made sense to me. It made sense that this old kind of curmudgeonly guy ends up being saved by this sixteen-year-old girl. And, and as you also referred to later on in the book, both Keisha, who is this really dominant black woman, and at the very end Sheila, who's a woman in her seventies, both take over leadership roles and lead their respective portions of the story.
Right.
Will is really relegated to, to sort of a, you know, a second, a secondhand player. Although he is the thread, he and Hope are the thread that run, Hope the character named Hope.
Right.
The threads that run throughout and, and take us right to the end. And then unknown as to whether or not they will be in the sequel.
Oh, there's gonna be a sequel.
Yeah, oh yeah. Matter of fact, if you listen to the podcast, I sent you a link to the podcast. Next week, I'm going to do chapter one and chapter two of the sequel. And then I'm gonna take a hiatus and just work on the story, work on the sequel some more.
If people wanna listen to that podcast, where should they go?
Well, anywhere you get, it's on every podcast platform. I tend to like Amazon the best because they get my, my broadcast up, like as soon as I publish it, it's available on Amazon. So if you go to Amazon podcasts and you go to After the Virus, A Survivalist Journal, you'll find it there. And it's not survivalist, it's survivalist.
Right. If you had to, could you feed your family living in the areas where Will and Hope go around Lake Almanor, Upper Park? Could, could you make it?
Yes. Yeah, we have enough. Well, if I was strictly a vegan or a vegetarian, it would be tough. But as, as an omnivore and as a hunter, I could certainly, there's, there's ample megafauna around here.
So your characters eat squirrel, deer, trout, other fish, cat tails. Well, and the, the, the Mido, their staple was salmon and acorn meal. But in, in the book, I don't think you, you used acorn meal.
Yeah, I didn't. That is sort of an oversight and I don't know why I didn't. I sort of, well, I, I guess I do know because they were never in the oak zone during the fall when the acorn harvest would be.
And it takes a lot of time to leach the tannic acid out of it. You have to be in one place for a while and they tended to keep moving.
Yeah, exactly. So they were only at the zone where either blue oaks or valley oaks or black oaks or scrub oaks or interior live oaks or canyon live oaks would be until about September. And normally the acorn drop is in late September or October. So if they were above the zone of the oaks, starting in September, they never would have been somewhere where they would have access to fresh acorns.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think it's interesting that you said that in the book they learned independence and dependence. So they were independent from civilization in some, most ways, but very dependent on snaring the rabbit or whatever it was. So that, that seems to be a major kind of theme in the book.
Yeah, I mean, so true. Even, even if we consider ourselves to be fiercely independent, there are still things that we are absolutely dependent on, that we can't get away from being dependent on. And the point that I make at the end of that sort of statement is that the most important dependence that he forms is with this teenage girl. Because of the sort of emotional and spiritual support that he gleans from that relationship.
Well, and he needs her when his hand gets severed and when he's sick and whatever. And when he's being attacked, she, she rescues him a lot.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. She's a badass.
To switch gears, I'm finishing up a book about how to have a happy, long-term marriage. And as someone who has done that, I think, what kind of advice would you give to say one of your three children if they were, I know they are, you're, one of them is married and has a grandchild, but what advice would you give them about, keep this in mind if you wanna make this relationship last over time?
Just keep going and never give up.
Never give up what?
Never give up on the relationship. You know, there are, we live in a time, and I don't think it's as bad now maybe as it was twenty, thirty years ago. But we live in a time when sort of giving up on your relationship. When I was a teenager, I mean, every one of my friends except for me had divorced parents. And then as an adult, I've gone through periods where we see lots and lots of separations of, of husbands and wives and moms and dads. And I would say if you, if you stick it out through the hard times, better times will come.
What, when have been the hard times for you? People often say babies.
Yeah, I would, I would have to agree. I would warn, I would warn anybody having children that it's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be some rough years in there. And now my kids are grown and adults and my marriage has blossomed again from it. So, you know, if, if we had given up during those hard years where somebody's working and somebody's taking care of the kids and, you know, you're fighting over finances and et cetera, et cetera, and you don't have time for each other. If you give into those things, you, you never reach that, that silver lining.
How long have you been married to Kathleen?
Twenty-six years.
That's great. Okay, let's shift gears again. I know that something that's important to you as when you were a city council member and as a citizen is unhoused people. So I'm, I'm, and I know that you spent a weekend being unhoused. So could, it, it is a big issue in this town now and in a lot of places. So could you say a word about what it was like being unhoused? What you learned and what solutions would be if you had absolute power?
Yeah, well, first I would say that, you know, the, the one weekend experience of living as an unhoused person doesn't, I mean, it doesn't qualify me for anything. I mean, it's, it, it, it was, you know, it was a dramatization of what that experience is. So I don't pretend that that really answered questions. I did, you know, I did find out some things about what's involved in going back and forth from one place to get your meal to another place to lay down to sort of the, the, a little bit of the vitriol that you hear when you're walking down the street with a backpack on and, and sleeping in a public place. But I've learned a lot more since then than I did just that weekend, of course. And I think we all have. I mean, you know, for those that are paying attention, there's, there's lots of information out there, I think, on that experience. I really like. Matter of fact, I just wrote a letter to the editor this morning about Natalie Hansen's series of, of biographies, really.
She's a reporter for the Enterprise Record.
Yes. You know, she's, she's done about five or six now. And they're really varied and, and they show the wide range of backgrounds and experiences and life events and, and things that have led to bringing to people where they are. And I think those are really important. It's important for us to understand that this is not, you know, it's not just a homogenous group. It's not a, there's not a stereotype. These people are, every one of them has a very different history that brought them to where they are and a very different set of challenges that they would need to overcome to get back on their feet. And so, let's see, what, what have I learned or what's my takeaway at this point in time on how to solve it? Well, I think it starts with some stability. You can't help a person solve their issues until you provide them with some sort of stable setting to do that within.
Where they have a telephone and an address and they can be contacted.
Well, I think it's, I think there are incremental steps to that stability. The first step is they need to know that where they're sleeping is not somewhere that someone's gonna come along in the middle of the night and say, you can't be here. Because if you can't get a decent night's sleep, then you can't have a decent day the next day. You get on this distorted schedule. And it certainly makes anesthetizing yourself with substances very appealing when you're constantly living in fear and turmoil. So having a spot, a sanctioned place where they can live without fear of being roustied, without fear of being harassed and without fear of their stuff being taken is the first step in that process. Once that stability is there, then our service providers have a regular, stable place that they know that they can meet with these people to try to start helping them with their other issues. Whether it's, whether it's looking for a job, if that's what somebody wants to do, whether it's getting connected to their SSI so that they have some money coming in, whether it's getting on medic, connecting with their Medicare, whether it's connecting with a veterans service group if they're veterans, whether it's getting them help with their addiction, whether it is, they have a, a mental health issue and they need to be connected to some sort of mental health help. All of those things cannot be achieved with any measure of success until we have one place that they can live safely and we can find them to help them at. All those other things that you mentioned, a phone, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think all those are steps in the process and the ultimate, at least the ultimate short term, is get them into a dwelling with an actual roof.
Not a tent.
Yeah, more than a tent, more secure than a tent. Get them into, create a, an inventory of extremely low income housing. Because if we can get rooms for two hundred to three hundred dollars a night, then that can get them into a room for under thirty-five percent of their SSI. So they still have two-thirds of their SSI for the rest of their needs, clothing and food, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's the path that I see and I think others kind of agree with that. There are more aggressive plans than that and that's great. But I think an incremental approach is a good start. And, and we can't even get to first base. We can't even get a sanctioned campground. That's really the first step.
It's interesting to me that CHAT, which provides permanent shared housing for formerly unhoused people is private. It's all private donations, I think. It's not, it wasn't a city endeavor. So I'm, I'm not clear what the city of Chico has actually done to house the house.
Not much, not much. No, there's been a, there's been a, there's been a resistance on the part of city leadership. And by that I mean city councils. Because city staff ultimately just does what city, ultimately just do what city councils tell them to do. And there has been a long resistance, not just with the current council, but with past councils as well. And not just because they're resistant, but sometimes they can't agree on the best method. And that, that disagreement leads to nothing being done. Which is really a shame. I mean, we had for the two years previous to this new council, we had a progressive council that should have gotten things done. But we couldn't get our act together and all agree on things. And I mean, I hold myself as responsible as anybody else that was on that council, that we didn't make it happen. Maybe we didn't push hard enough. Maybe we didn't, we weren't critical enough of the way our requests were being carried out. Whatever it was, we didn't do it. And we need a plan. I proposed strategic planning for a, a plan to reduce homelessness in the community about two years ago. That kind of hasn't gone anywhere. COVID hit and, you know, ad hoc groups fell apart, et cetera, et cetera. But really what we need, and the city manager would agree with this, is we need a plan. And once we have a plan, then we need to just stick to the plan. But we don't even have a plan yet.
Roughly, do you have any idea how many people are unhoused in Chico and in Byrnes?
Well, you know, the PIT, the Point in Time Survey was canceled because of COVID or, or postponed because of COVID this year. The last one we have is from 2019. And I'm just gonna give you some rough, not accurate numbers, but there were about two thousand people without homes in the county. Of that, I believe that the number was somewhere around four to five hundred who were living unsheltered. Not only were they, not only did they not have homes, but they didn't have shelters so that they were living out.
Like not in a car or not in a tent?
Or not in a facility designed for them.
Like Torres Shelter.
Torres Shelter, Jesus Center, Catalyst, et cetera, et cetera. Those are still unhoused people. They're just temporarily housed by, by a group. But yeah, I think the number was about four to five hundred that were living centrally on the streets or in the park or in the woods or you name it.
Do you have any guesstimate as to how many of those are mentally ill? Cause you know, the people you see are the guys that are muttering to themselves, walking down the street, swearing or something. So they, they're the ones who, who stand out.
Yeah, and, and they're the most sort of obvious manifestation of the problems. So yeah, we've, we've, we've gotten figures from various groups. The validity of them probably varies from group to group. But it seems to me the latest numbers that I've seen suggested, you know, somewhere in the area of forty percent of those living out. Uh, you know, somewhere in the area of forty percent of those living out. Have, uh, mental health challenges. Um, you know, a number that's somewhere near there of people who have drug addiction or drug abuse. Problems.
And obviously there's overlap. People self-medicate.
Correct. You know, I think, go ahead.
What, what did you find? It took to win the election. I know it took a lot of work and time, meeting and greeting. What, how do you win a city council election? What did you learn about city government from serving? And how were conservatives able to take over Chico City Council? So, three questions.
Okay, one at a time. Give me the first one first.
Uh, what did it take to win?
Uh, it took an incredible amount of time, energy, money and self-promotion. Um, it was the hardest, the, being on the council is very hard. But it was not as exhausting as the year of campaigning. Uh, that was merciless. That was just non-stop and I. Uh, I called Rich Ober lately who has, who ran twice. And I said, I don't know how you did it, Rich. I, I feel so bad that you didn't get in because I know. The commitment of, uh, energy and, and, uh, and, and your essence that you put into running. So, yeah, so all those things, um, time, a lot of time, a lot of energy. Uh, a lot of self-promotion and a lot of, a lot of that is for fundraising. And it, it's really unfortunate that, um, elections can be bought. Uh, in cities. And that's very much the case. Uh, when you have. Groups raising hundreds of thousands of dollars for their candidates, um, that's pretty hard to beat. No matter how much, no matter how good your message or how good a self-promoter you are. And I'm, I've always been for, um, uh, campaign, uh, donation controls. I, I, I think it's, uh, it's unconscionable that we allow exorbitant amounts of money to buy candidates.
Right. Um, what did you hear on people's minds? What, what did they, they want to say? Scott, I really want you to think about this and do this for me. What, what were, what were the themes you heard that people wanted?
Well, at that time, um. A, a variety of things. Of course homelessness was, uh, was already at that time was one of the big issues. Uh, climate change and environmental issues were another big one among. Uh, the people that I was working with and speaking to, um. Uh, an- another big one that was the sort of spanned both sides of. Of the political spectrum was, uh, the idea of civility. On the council because we went through a couple of years and I went to a, I went to a whole year of every city council meeting for a year before I. Ran to watch the, um. The dysfunction among the council and how poorly they spoke to each other. Uh, how uncivil they were to, not only to each other, but to community members who spoke. And, um, and so that was one of the things that I heard from people and that was my own. Sort of number one, and if you look back to my campaign signs, uh, respect and civility were the two top. Things that I promoted. And it goes back to your original question about my, my sign as a Libra and sort of balance. Uh, balance and fair-mindedness. And, um, I've tried very hard the last couple of years on the council. To, um, listen patiently. Um, to both sides. Naturally, I have a bias. No one in this world does not have a bias. I have a side that I believe in, but I believe in listening to the other side and looking for. The parts of their argument that resonate, that have some validity. And when they do, trying to act upon those things. For instance, you know, there's a big part of the group that I would label as. Uh, anti-homeless. Uh, and a, a big part of their. One of their big concerns is addiction and the lack of addiction services and the lax, lack of detox. Uh, uh, facilities and that sort of thing. And I agree.
Sure.
I agree with them completely. Uh, we need those things. If we're gonna battle. If we're gonna reduce this issue of homelessness, we've gotta have those tools. To help us with the, with the faction of that population that is suffering from those problems. So I absolutely believe in looking at both sides and, and although I lean to one side. I'm happy to take the, the parts of the other side that I feel are valid and incorporate them into policy.
Um, what did you learn about actually sitting on the city council in terms of? How to get things done? I mean, I, I think what I've heard you say, it's very hard, even if people agree. On a topic to agree on how to implement it.
Yeah, so I mean, there are some things that, uh, uh, you know, when you're in the minority. You're just not gonna get done. But you can modify decisions that the other side is making. And every once in a while, there's an issue that may resonate with. One or two of the counselors that are typically on the other side of, of issues that may get you a win. And so all you can do is, is, um. State your position as in a compelling way, uh, in a, in a respectful way. Hope that it gets heard by the other side and then seek. Whatever consensus you can get to try to move the council in your direction, even if you know they're not gonna move all the way. Or seek that consensus in a couple of additional counselors. Who will go along with something that, that maybe was a little more, more centrist or a little more. To one side than they would have or nearly been. Uh, because you've, you've given a respectful, compelling reason why. That's what I try to do and it's worked, it's worked a few times. And then, you know, every one of those little victories, I'm like, yeah. Uh, it's, it's, it's actually in some ways more rewarding in, when that happens and you're in the minority. Than when you're in the majority, because when you're in the majority, you expect to get those things done.
How were the conservatives able to take over the city council in Chico, which is a university town? I think of as fairly liberal.
Yeah, they were able to, um. Correctly discern that the needle, uh, needle exchange, the syringe program. Was their ticket to getting into office. They saw that as a wedge issue in the community. Where they could bring a bunch of people across from the other side who were ordinarily, uh. You know, were more progressive in their thinking, but who agreed that, um. Needle litter in the community was a bad thing. And they found it dangerous and they found the program distasteful. And they used that wedge. And they spent lots and lots of money and lots of energy promoting. How, uh, the progressive counselors supported this. Syringe program and the conservatives didn't. And I believe that, that that's how they won.
Hmm, interesting. Needle exchange would keep needles off the ground, right? I don't understand it.
Yeah, and that's the, therein lies the problem as I see it, is this wasn't a needle exchange. It was a, um, it was a syringe access program that did not require an exchange. And because it didn't require an exchange, uh, there was not the motivation. For those needles to be returned.
Got it. Um, are you ever gonna run again or is that it?
I'm not telling.
Okay. That wasn't a no. Um, last question is, I think you're gonna spend the summer. Building a cabin from scratch in Wyoming with your wife. Is that true?
Well, that's what I did most of last summer. Uh, and this summer, I have a seasonal job in Wyoming that I will be flying home from for city council meetings. Uh, leading wildlife tours in Yellowstone and, um, Grand Teton's National Parks. And working a little bit on my cabin on the side.
How did you learn how to build a cabin? YouTube?
Uh, I just did it. Yeah. Best way to learn something is to do it.
Everybody I know who builds, they look at YouTube for everything.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's certainly, yeah, that's a big part of it. I had, I, I had dabbled in, um, construction for many years. You know, I've, I've done additions to my houses and that sort of thing. And really the framing part, the rough construction is really the easiest part. It's kind of like tinker toys. The hard part is all the finish work, which I'm not necessarily good at, but because this is a cabin. I'm not that concerned about the finish work. Um, so yeah, YouTube, uh, is a huge. Asset when it comes to building like, sometimes I go out and I work on my own truck. And I'll take the computer and I'll set it on, I'll open the hood and I'll set it on the side and I'll play the YouTube video as I'm. As I'm taking a part of, a part in the engine.
Right. Would you be willing to live in Wyoming in the winter or are you thinking of this as a summer cabin?
Well, I would be willing to. My wife, however, is not willing to. So for that reason, we are not going to.
Oh, boy. Um, anything else that you would like to add about your books or your? Community service, anything that we have left out that comes to mind?
Uh, you know, I guess I would just add that, um. I fell in love with this community forty-two years ago when I moved here. Um, there are a lot of really wonderful people here and, and let's face it. There can be all sorts of physical attributes, all sorts of geographic attributes to a place, but it's the people. That, uh, make a community, a community, that it's the people that I think that you fall in love with in the end. And, uh, there are a lot of wonderful people here and I. They're still wonderful.
Yeah.
There are people who. Uh, have sort of a different way of viewing how this community should be and be run. And, uh, I just hope that, 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 the sort of people that I met when I moved here. The old hippies and ex-college students. Who, who seem to, you know, have a, a, a very, uh, low-key and relaxed. Um, way of going about living in this community. Um, I hope that endures. Um, because that's, to me, that, that was the Chico that I fell in love with.